Good evening. This is the Tuesday, August 14th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM this evening to discuss three topics: employment of employee approval of the July 17th and August 5th, 2012 closed session minutes, and probable or imminent litigation. Let me start out the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is public comments. We have received one blue card from Gilbert Fisher. Mr. Fisher? If you could step up to the mic, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board. And press the button to light up the little red light so your microphone works, please.
Thank you. Gilbert Fisher, 586 North Van Aken Street. My wife and I went -- oh, okay, it's working. My wife and I went to the assessor's office and complained about our taxes. Seven or 10 days later, a nice young lady called me on the telephone and said, "Mr. Fisher, Mr. Fisher, your taxes this year only went up 6 percent." She says, "Isn't that good news? Last year they went up 12 percent. Aren't you happy?" I told her to go to hell and I hung up. 2009, 2010, and 2011, my taxes to District 205, right here in this building, went up over 20 percent. On this one light item, for you people, my taxes in three years went up over 20 percent dollars. My taxes are due in two weeks. I'm $1,000 short. Where am I supposed to get the money to pay it? My wife worked all her life. We sent four kids through college, no student loans, no nothing. We paid everything ourselves. She's retired on Social Security and gets about $10,040 a year. I worked 37 years for the United States Post Office in Lombard. I retired on full benefits. I get $31,000 a year. And in three years, the city of Elmhurst, 205 School District, charged me more than 20 percent dollars payment to you, and you're crying for more money. The press is here. Why don't you get the state's attorney to come into this office and check on how they're spending the money? A 20 percent increase in my taxes on my house that's been paid for since 1989. I have to sell it. I have to get out, and you're crying for more money. This is a disgrace. You say you pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. They've got a name for it. I don't know what it is. I've got my own name for it. That's disgusting. That's two-faced. This country was started in a rebellion against taxes, and you're shoving it down my throat. Well, I've got news for you. There's going to be big trouble in this town. People are getting angry. I filled out a yellow card to get your addresses. I was told I can't have it. You know what? Three people came to me and gave me all your addresses. I don't know these people, but people are angry on the taxes that they're paying in their houses. And I'm asking you right now to get me $1,000 in two weeks so I can pay my taxes. You're the government. You're shoving it down my throat, so give me the money to pay it. Thank you and good night. And why doesn't the press go and get the Attorney General in here to find out what you're doing with your money? 20 percent dollar increase in three years, and you want more?
Next item on our agenda is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell.
Yes, we have, to start off with, Freedom of Information Act requests. We had two. One was regarding any bids for locker demolition and installation. This request was granted. We had one regarding home addresses of Board members, and that FOIA was denied. With that, we're going to turn to Chris Welton. Chris has really two presentations tonight. He would like to spend some time recapping the budget for this past school year and then moving on from there to a tentative budget for the upcoming school year, 2012, 2013. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you. We're going to start out with talking about fiscal year 2012. We're going to recap fiscal year 2012, which ended June 30th. And the figures tonight we have are on the cash basis, and they're unaudited. The auditors will be here -- they normally complete their audit to come to a board meeting in November or December to talk about the audited figures for the fiscal year, which the auditors will present financial statements on the modified accrual basis, so their numbers won't be exactly the same as the numbers presented tonight. But from a revenue standpoint, the property taxes this year came in right on target with And you might see some variations amongst the funds where we were levying more or less in adjustments between funds in order to allocate the fund balances a little differently, but we were right on target as far as property taxes. From the state situation, we had a favorable variance where last year we budgeted for three categorical payments from the state for the mandated categorical programs, and we received four. Other than in the special ed personnel mandated categorical, in that program, we received the fifth payment right before fiscal year end. So about June 28th, we got five quarterly payments for special ed personnel. And in the federal grant area, we had received the final payments from the ARRA stimulus But overall, our operating revenues had a favorable variance to budget. The budgeted revenues of $98,981,746, where we had actual revenues come in at $101,839,900, which is 102.9 percent of budget, but it's only 1.4 percent more than the prior year. Across all funds, operating and non-operating, we had a favorable variance to budget for revenues. We had budgeted revenues of $109,743,968 with actual revenues coming in at $112,570,75. So the actual revenues came in at 102.6 percent of budget, which was 1.5 percent more than last year. And so that's the revenue side of last year. And now a little bit about the expenditure side of last year. And on the revenue side, the property taxes being 80 percent of our budget, if we could get those right on target, we'd know that, you know, that is an indication of how the year is going. On the expenditure side, it's really salary and benefits because we are a service organization, so that is our 80 percent approximately of our expenditures, our salary and benefits. And salary and benefits came in right on target. The mild winter we had helped to reduce overtime related to snow removal, and that also helped in the natural gas consumption in the building. Both electricity and natural gas rates have been better than expected, which really helped in our favorable budget variance in the utility accounts. On the other side, transportation costs have been really increasing. And also, the employer contribution rates for IMRF continue to increase. So those two funds, we're going to have to monitor carefully and adjust our levies appropriately for those increases in costs. But on the expenditure side, in the operating funds, we had budgeted $99,030,165, where the actual expenditures came in at $97,625,829, which is 98.6 percent of budget, which has actual expenditures 0.3 percent less than the prior year. And across all funds, we were at 98.5 percent of budget, which is 0.7 percent less than the prior year. So that's really what I had to say about the expenditure side of the equation. We also provided this chart here, which illustrates our cash flow for the fiscal year. And really, I have a dotted red line for the prior year on the expenditure side and a solid red line for the current year. And you can see that they were almost exactly identical from FY '11 to FY '12. And you see our revenue stream, which comes in primarily in September with our property tax payment and in June. And that June payment results in our fund balance at the end of the year at $32,614,000. But you can see this is our low point for fund balance in May. And that's the case every year. So when we talk about not wanting to issue tax anticipation warrants, so we're not borrowing to pay our operating expenses, we are concerned about this point in the fiscal year when we hadn't received property taxes since September. And so we're going to talk a little bit more about that in the next slide, where we're comparing -- we're comparing -- and this, on Board docs, this is two different slides, but I combined them just for presentation purposes to show that at June -- or at May 31st, this is our low point, we had 7.68 percent of fund balance. Fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. And then at June 30th, 33.41 percent. And then in May, you can see of last year, we were down to $3 million or 3.23 percent on May 31st. And at the end of the year, we were at 29 percent. But when you look closely at these numbers, our current fund balance policy is at 25 percent. But this kind of shows that if we did have a 25 percent fund balance at June 30th, we would probably, considering a balanced budget, we probably would be in a situation where we might need to borrow May 31st. And we talked about it in the Finance Committee when we looked at this, that we thought that 25 percent is a fund balance policy might be too low because if it was 25 percent, we might need to borrow in order to get through May for cash flow purposes. So we talked about, based on this, possibly increasing that policy to 26 percent. And so that would come to the Policy Committee as a suggested change based on this data right here. But also, before we move on, David, this also shows that this year turned out to be in the operating funds, a net income or revenues exceeding expenditures by $4,214,000. So it turned out to be a better-than-expected year. We turned out to have a favorable budget variance on the revenue side and the expenditure side. And so it was a positive year. We also talked -- this is one of the reports that I show every month, is expenditure accounts that can vary each year. For example, substitutes, sometimes substitutes for -- it's hard to predict how they are going to turn out from one year to the next, but you can see here that substitutes in both certified and non-certified came out better than expected. The legal fees were over budget this year due to the negotiation process we had all year or most of the year. Natural gas, I talked about earlier as being a favorable year. Unemployment turned out better than expected. We were over budget in private facility tuition based on the number of students that we needed to outplace, and those costs have been steadily increasing. And then we were positive on the public tuition. And then electricity, I talked about earlier. We had the rates have been very good as far as electricity rates. And the last monthly presentation we have here is on our grants. And really, what I wanted to point out is, we talked earlier about how we received four mandated quarterly payments during the fiscal year for our mandated categoricals. That's the private facility. We received four, but we are still two in arrears, where the state owes these last two payments was from March of 2012 and June of 2012. We had not received those at June 30th. Same is true for the, it used to be called extraordinary, but it's currently called Funding for Children Requiring Special Ed Services. We received four, where we were still two behind. Special ed personnel, I talked about that earlier. We actually received the fifth payment in late June. So if you can keep going, Dave. The only other thing I wanted to point out on the state grants was the driver's ed payment, the final payment for our driver's ed, keep going down, was canceled by the state right there. So we only received two payments this year. We're owed one, and one was completely canceled. But if you go all the way down, we're still owed by the state about $1.9 million. All the way at the bottom. So that is the recap of fiscal year 2012.
Any questions from Board members?
I have just a couple. While we have this still up, and this is a little bit of a preview, but I think it's worth noting, as we look at the state revenue sources that we have, I think, Chris, is it accurate to say that the unanticipated payments by the state were one of the key drivers of our overall revenue for last year being higher than anticipated?
Yes, it certainly was a positive. I think we had only -- the state had been getting progressively worse, so we had only budgeted three payments.
Okay.
And so we received four and five in personnel, so that definitely was a favorable budget variance.
So when we look at that $4 million for the year that we were higher than we anticipated, a majority of that was due to state payments? I think it was, or anyway, part of the reason that our revenue estimates were off were because the state has been inconsistent, I guess is my point.
Yes.
But the other thing in previewing, we haven't, Chris hasn't presented the budget for next year yet, but I took the liberty of looking ahead and comparing. This is all the revenue that we receive from the state, and this is intended to be reimbursement for specific categoricals, right? Special ed tuition reimbursement, special ed personnel expenses. And I noted that you've got the budget numbers for this year as well included in this report. So if we look at just what you've got there, the one that's up there, arts education, the budget for this year that we're going to start looking at.
Let's go to a different one. That's not a good example.
Dave, would you mind just go all the way to the top, the special ed private facility tuition?
Yeah.
So the budget was $366,000 for revenue. But if I look at our budget for last year in terms of expenditures, we spent, I think, $1.9 million on private facility tuition.
That sounds right.
For last year. I was struck, you know, we've talked a lot about, over the years since I've been on the Board, looking at state reimbursements. And I actually sat down and finally figured out the percentage of reimbursement that we receive from the state. And I think it's important to note that in this particular category, the first one, we receive about 18 percent of our funding for these services from the state. And if we scroll down, if you go down, we receive about 16 percent reimbursement from the state for special ed personnel, which is one of our more significant. We spend, I think, $7.5 million on special ed personnel. And it goes on. And when we look at ELL, one of our growth areas for the year, we're looking at, we receive, the way that I calculated, I think we received $50,000 from the state, and yet the program for ELL instruction for our English language learners, I think we receive about 4 percent reimbursement from the state. And I just think that that is worth noting to my fellow Board members, looking at it this way. We always look at what the state is providing, and we look at and we talk about the schedule of payments. But when you compare the reimbursement that we're receiving from the state, and when we discuss things in our curriculum and instruction meetings, committee meetings, talking about being in compliance with state mandates, I think it's very interesting to also take into consideration and also look at the reimbursement. So the rules are set by the state, the programs are defined by the state, but they're clearly nowhere near funded. And I just, it was a different way for me to look at it this year, and I think it's something that is of note.
Ms. Stupin.
Actually, that's a great introduction to the comment that I wanted to kind of set the stage for. And you're going to hear about it in our update in the Board Improvement and Policy Committee and our engagement with legislators. And so these are the sorts of conversations and information that we need to be armed with as we have those very healthy, specific conversations with our legislators so that they understand the impact. You know, as we look at, is it state-funded education or is it local property owner-funded education? So, you know, if you kind of think about Ms. Hirsch's analogy, Chris, and if you can think about it across our entire budget, as we begin to put a plan together to visit with our legislators and build those relationships and talk about the educational impact to our public education system and where we want to be and how we get there, it's very valuable, this information and this perspective. So I would welcome all the, you know, every day that you're looking at our budget and you're looking at where the funding comes from and what is mandated, that you arm us with as much information that you know that we may not know, those details, the better off we'll be.
Ms. Hirsch?
I just wanted to add an addendum, and I forgot to include this in my initial comments. I don't want to imply in any way, shape, or form that we should not be servicing the kids that come to our district, to our English language learners who needs assistance in our special education, children who clearly are in need of support. My challenger, my note, is really about the program definition and meeting the state standards, which may or may not be in our teams, in our administrative leaderships team, the best use of those resources. So I just, I'm questioning and challenging, you know, the definition by the state, which is far, far away from where the local delivery of services is attempting to be delivered. So I just wanted to make clear that I fully support that we should be providing the services for our kids who need services. I just wonder if the state defining it in Springfield is defining it in a way that we agree is the most effective use of those resources for those kids.
If I can just ask you a couple of questions. Typically, we've gotten about 7 percent of our budget has come from the state of Illinois. Is that consistent this year?
Yes.
And off the top of your head, would you happen to know what the average school district in the state of Illinois receives as a percentage of their budget from the state of Illinois? I just can't recall that number.
It's much higher than that. I don't have it. It's in the budget at a glance, but I don't have the number memorized, but it's much higher than the 6 to 7 percent that we receive.
Yeah. And just to review, in the last 2011, '12 fiscal year, our revenues increased by 1.4 percent over the prior year. We spent eight tenths of 1 percent less than we did in the prior year. Our May 2012 fund balance was about $7.5 million, and that was our low cash point of the year. To achieve that balance, we started out the year with 29 percent of the money that we would need for the year in the bank. And that, if you project in your model, if we, and that was a 29 percent fund balance, if you project in your model, if we had started out with a 25 percent fund balance, it looked like we would have to have had to borrow to meet our expenses by May 31st. Your suggestion is to increase that to a minimum of 26 percent of our projected budget. And we're going to bring that next to the, it's been out of the Finance Committee, next to the Policy Committee, and then next to the full Board to vote on. Ms. Stupin.
I just wanted to note that our current policy, I recall in the past it was 25 to 30 percent, and it currently says it's no less than 25 percent. So just so that everyone knows, it's pretty close, but.
And since I've been on the Board, when I came onto the Board, the policy was 30 percent. And then we reduced it, and so relatively recently, it was 30 percent.
And actually, I think this is a good preface for a couple of topics from now, which is going to be our district performance indicators. There was an accounting change that our auditor recommended that we could lower it to 25 percent to try to minimize the cuts that we were making in the district. The Board did lower it to a range, instead of a hard 30 percent, the Board lowered it to a range of 25 to 30 percent to save as many jobs in the district as we could. But now that we've got a few years of operating experience under our belt, it looks like if we were ever to start out at 25 percent, that would be too low. So we're looking to a change to make that to a minimum of 26 percent. So just to clarify. Anything else for Mr. Welton? Thank you, Chris.
Well, before I go on, I want to say that when I look at the state budget and how we receive our funding, I do think that when we talk to our legislators, that the special ed mandated categorical programs is the area that I think we should make sure that we tell, we emphasize to them about the underfunding. I think that's the most critical for our school district area for the state grants and the state funding is the special ed mandated categorical grants. And we can talk further about that as we get closer.
That is also a federal issue that also needs to be addressed because IDA is supposed to reimburse special ed costs originally at 40 percent. The federal government is not reimbursing us anywhere near that. I think the last time I looked, it was 22, 25 percent. That's been an ongoing debate in Washington. However, that number has not changed. So that's, so just so we're clear, it's a state issue, but it's also a federal issue.
I'm ready to present on the tentative budget for 2012, '13. And the first page is a summary of the budget, so I'm cutting to the chase here, where the operating, the operating budget has revenues of $99,850,000. has revenues of $99,854,210 with operating expenditures of $100,971,837. That is a expenditures exceeding revenues for the budget year by $1.1 million. And we had made our budget reductions this year based on the PMA projections. And at that time, we weren't planning for the Elmhurst Hospital refund and the Center for Health refund for this fiscal year in their entirety. We were planning for just the hospital at $1.5 million. And so that is why we did implement the budget reductions that we were planning to implement. It's just that we weren't expecting to have, to absorb that entire refund in fiscal year 12, '13. But, but because we had the favorable fiscal year 2012, we still would finish the year with 31% fund balance, 31% as a percentage of expenditures in fund balance. So that is above the fund balance policy. But why don't I go into more of the details and start with discussing the revenues? And as I said earlier, the key piece of the revenues is, in our budget, is property taxes. And when we talk about property taxes, we receive the fall, the fall taxes, which in fiscal year 2012, '13, we receive in September of 2012, which is on the 2011 tax extension. And in calculating the budget for that, we reduced the extension by the amount we collected in June and less the refund to the hospital for the, for the, for the tax-exempt property and the interest that we would have to pay on, for that refund. But, and then we also did the spring taxes, which is based on the 2012 extension, which is based on a 3% CPI plus a, plus new growth. And, and so that's, and so when we look at the property taxes, it's 84% of our budget across all funds. And so that's really the biggest thing on the revenue side. Some of the other things that can be pointed out, we, we increased in the rentals a little bit, our, we increased for rentals because of our new rental policy. We took that into consideration. Interest right now with interest rates are, are just so low, they're lowest in history, really, I think. And so interest is really dried up as a revenue source for the district, not nearly what it was five to 10 years ago. And the, and then the state sources, we've, we've talked a little bit about that. The general state aid in, has, in the state budget has been prorated at 89%, where last year it was prorated at 95%. We've talked about that before, which resulted in a, in a decrease. And the mandated categorical payments, we, we did budget for four quarterly payments this year and all except personnel. So every mandated categorical, I, I budgeted to be two payments behind at the end of fiscal year 2013. So the only one that we didn't budget for was personnel, which, because we got that payment just before the end of the year. And then on the federal side, the idea flowed through as our, our largest federal grant, and we budgeted that based on what SACID planned, they sent me their budget for next year and what, what we would expect, an idea flowed through at that $1,420,000. So that, that is the primary federal grant that we receive. The debt service, are the property taxes for the bonded interests that we have for those debt payments. The life, safety, and capital projects, those are just the, the interest that we earn on those funds. And that really is it for revenues.
Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch.
Chris, can you just recap? In the last couple of weeks, I've had a couple of people ask me about the hospital reimbursement. And I think we've had a discussion, I know, at the board table about the state challenging hospitals about their non-exempt status. And I think that there's been an update in terms of relatively recent legislation, in terms of interpretation. But I think the other thing that may not have been clear to people was that the Elmhurst Hospital facility has challenged their real estate assessments and is looking for relief. If you could just give a recap for what has transpired.
They've applied for tax-exempt status. For the new hospital, plus for the Center for Health, they, they applied for tax exempt on those, on the Center for Health parcels, at 54% of that, that building is tax exempt. And the law changed, changed to make more objective criteria to determine if hospitals are tax exempt. And at this point, we believe that they will achieve that criteria for tax exempt status and therefore will be a war, or will receive a refund from the county for the taxes that they paid on those parcels.
But it's my understanding that the hospital has gone back and appealed that Center for Health property at that ratio of 50, I'm not sure I have the number right, 54%?
54%.
For the last three property tax years?
Three years.
So it's not just, okay.
2009, 10, and 11.
There was just some uncertainty. I've had a lot of questions on it lately, so I just wanted to clarify.
If I can help clarify that, there's two issues here. The issue that this, that the new Elmhurst Hospital has just been built, and because of their status with the state government, they put them for the, the hospital for the first time in history on the tax rolls this year. If the hospital gets a favorable ruling, we'll just, we just have to refund what we collected this year from the hospital. It's money that came in this year, that is likely to go out this year. We may owe them some interest on that money, and that may have a deuterious effect on the district, but that's not a huge issue for us. What, what the issue is, is going back three years and saying, well, we've converted. And, and Center for Health has paid property taxes ever since the facility opened in...
I think it's 1999.
1999, that sounds right. So what the hospital did is they, they went back and they said, well, we've converted of that four-story building, we've converted 54% of that building into hospital use. They combined the parcel numbers and then now pay taxes under one parcel number. So for the last three years, they've gone back and say, we want 54% of the taxes we've, property taxes we've paid returned. That totals about $950,000. Well, we didn't ever expect to have to return that money in the last three years, and that's money that we budgeted to spend and did spend over the last three years, not knowing that they would appeal to, for, to get it back. So, and, and that's where the biggest part of the budget hit comes from. It's about $950,000 that they're asking to be returned to them.
So I want to move on to the expenditures.
Ms. D'Erone?
I'm sorry.
Before you do that, were we not going to talk to the hospital and see if there was something we could work out instead of having to pay all of this back in one year? Has anything happened?
I am waiting to hear officially whether or not they are going to be declared tax exempt or not. That has not been determined yet. So I think it's a little premature to go to the hospital now to have that discussion until we're certain that through this process, they will indeed get tax exempt status.
Dave, if I recall, we brought this up last time, and it was, it's not, it's not their deal, it's the county's deal. They apply to the county, the county refunds them, and then we've got to deal with the county. So there was a bit of mechanics there where they, it's not their agreement.
I forgot that part, yeah. It's really not theirs, it's the county. Refund with the county.
I had another question about the, the bottom of your chart here, this debt service...
Yes.
1.479. What is that transferring from other funds? I don't understand that. Don't we get all our debt service in one lump sum?
Two, two things. We pay some leases on our technology, and so those, those funds are transferred from the expenditure side on the ed fund to the, to the debt service fund, where there, those leases are paid. The other part is on some debt certificates that we have for the stadium and this building, which are paid out of the expenditure side of the O and M fund, and those are transferred over to the debt service fund, and then the debt service fund pays those debt certificates. So you, those would be, when we look at the expenditures, they're in the, the six object or the, the other, other payments.
Just before we move off revenue, Jim asked what the state average was for revenue reimbursement for other districts in the state of Illinois. We receive 6.8% from the state on our revenues. The average is 34.6 as an average across the state of Illinois for state reimbursement.
So we're going to move to the expenditure side. And I want to, this is our tentative budget, the final budget, and this will be on display for, for 30 days prior to our budget hearing on September 25th, when we have the final budget. And at that time, we'll have, I'm hoping to have more, more charts and graphs because we are still early on. The biggest part of our budget on the expenditure side is salary and benefits, and we're still working through a lot of changes. The HR department is working extremely hard on a lot of positions moving around and hiring at this point. So it will have a lot firmer, more accurate numbers at the final budget. So there will be some changes between the tentative budget and the final budget, primarily in staffing and salaries and, and benefits. But as you can see, our, our total budget here, salaries are 59% that, when, when you include the non-operating funds. And the benefits are 11.35% of our budget. So, so the combination puts us at, at over 70% salaries and benefits. And so in talking about salaries, we should, we'll, we'll move on, we'll, we'll look at our staffing. I put together some, a couple of spreadsheets on staffing, but other things, the transportation fund continues, that is increasing with our new contract, with our new bus company. It definitely is an increase over the last contract. We had a really good contract going into this RFP process, which was very, very competitive. And, and in this process, the, the bids came in, and it's resulting in an increase in expenditures and, and also gas prices have been increasing. So the expenditures in the transportation fund are increasing. The employer contribution rate for the IMRF fund is going from 11% to 12%. So that's a 10% increase in expenditures for IMRF contributions. On the, some of the capital outlay items are for technology and vehicles is primarily what the, the capital outlay and the non-capitalized equipment is. And in the other objects is where you see those, those transfers, payments for the, for the leases for technology and also...
Tuition.
Is in the other objects category. But Dave, can you go to the staffing analysis? And then on the staffing, and this, when we say that we have these positions vacant, that's because the HR department had, and this was a few weeks ago, but because they've been working very hard, they're, they're filling these vacancies. And so we have estimated amounts in for all these vacancies. So at final, we'll have more accurate figures. But the biggest increase you'll see is that our special ed assistance went from 171.2 to 188.2 based, and those are based on the, the needs of our students in the mandated programs, that we needed additional aides to meet those requirements. You can see that the, the health clerical staff, we had, we outsourced those positions. So those have been reduced. Other things, a lot of the reductions that we, we implemented in, in April are included in the, this staffing. This analysis is similar to the one that, a similar analysis to the, to what we used to have in the budget book, like four or five years ago, where, where, we're wanting to make sure that we focus on staffing because that is where the bulk of our expenditures are. And that's really all I had.
Ms. D'Erone?
I thought I understood this coming in here, but I got to ask it again. So I thought that our revenues had been decreased by this $2.9 million that we're going to owe, or we think we're going to owe the county, who will then be refunding it to the hospital. Is that true? Are they in there? So our new...
We have reduced our revenues.
By?
By the amount of the refund for the hospital.
The total refund, projected?
Yes.
Both for the Center for Health and for the...
Yes, both.
Previous year and the new hospital?
Yes.
So that's what's giving us an unbalanced budget?
Yes.
Primarily?
Yes.
I mean, there's other things, estate payments and all of that, but the one that we just, was the real wild card, was that one.
That is it.
Okay.
Without that liability, we would actually be in fairly good shape going into this year. That's the unfortunate thing. We would have probably balanced the budget, and never easily, but I think we would have been on a better footing to balance the budget this coming year. The wild card is the hospital. Chris and I felt it was prudent to reduce the revenues by that amount because we think, all indications are, they are going to be, although it has been finely determined, it appears that they will receive tax exempt status. Again, we don't know the exact timing of that, but it sounds like it could happen as early as this coming spring. And so that would affect our budget. We felt like as tough a pill as that is going to be to swallow, we should put it in the budget now, so we're planning not, not using that revenue this year.
I just want to ask a question, because at one point several months ago, we moved to set aside the funds that we received from, that we expected to refund to the hospital. So those funds, I thought, were segregated. So I just want to make sure that I understand the budget that's in front of us, right? So if we look at our total revenue of $84 million, you have already netted out the three... So if we look at our total revenue of 84 million, you have already netted out the three, approximate 3 million that we're going to owe the hospital, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Right. Just want to make sure.
Anything else?
So again, Chris will be coming back as we get closer to a final budget in the next board meeting.
And we'll, we have the legal budget to be approved later on in the meeting, the tentative budget form. Thank you.
Chris, I just want to thank you for the, the staffing report. I know this is, I think, a result of position control that you've been working hard to put in place, and I think this is an interesting way to, for us to look at, and we have more, I personally have more confidence in understanding where our staffing is allocated so that we have an understanding of the relative cost of our programming and what services we're offering. I think this is definitely a very helpful way to look at it, and I'm sure that we'll only improve in terms of our accuracy and, and the level of detail we can assess. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank Brad and Chris for really taking this on and staff under them, because this has been a huge undertaking in the past year that I've been here, but I think we're much more confident in that we know where staffing is, we know where those FTEs are. And again, as Chris mentioned, we are still in the mode of hiring even as we speak, and even today, we approved two more positions because of enrollment increases. And so we will have, we'll be closer to a final report once school starts on Monday, once we see students in their seats, and we actually have a count of how many students we really have. But at that point, Chris will be much more confident in what our staffing expenditures are going to be for the coming year.
Sorry, Mrs. Derone?
So basically, you're asking us to approve both tonight and probably in a month, an unbalanced budget. Is that the bottom line here?
Yeah, it is.
And what does the future hold for a district with an unbalanced budget? I mean, where do we, we get it out of our fund balances and we just move on? How do we?
No, we're going to have to go back and again, depending again, on what happens with state revenues and all those things in this coming year. But if we get to the point where we're going to have to reduce budget again for the coming year, then we'll have to do budget to backfill that loss for the following year. And so if you're going to take it out of fund equity for this year, again, we're going to have to then make cuts to rebalance the budget at a, at that 20, if the balanced budget is 26%, then long-term, we're going to have to figure out a way to cut budget to achieve 26% on an ongoing basis.
But the difference in future years is that we won't have this wild card out there of $3 million that we didn't know whether we were going to be hit with or not, right? I mean, we're going to have a little more control over this, I hope.
We'll have a new wild card.
You know, Susan, that's my fear. I mean, the fear is, this wild card is definitely one that just came out of the blue that nobody saw coming. So my, my fear is, and it, it's, it's an increasing fear all the time, is what we talked about earlier, mandated programs that are instituted by the state that are not funded by the state, yet we're obligated to put those programs or services or obligations in place. And I think there's the mindset that doesn't cost anything, and I'll use, right now, the big issue is teacher evaluation process and doing the whole teacher evaluation training. Well, that has taken hours and hours of personnel time alone in order for the administrative team, the deans and the department heads at the high school to get through the training. And what was estimated at, at 52 hours has doubled and sometimes tripled. Now, that's hard to capture, but I will tell you, I've got administrators working on weekends, trying to get through the training, they're, they're spending their hours above and beyond, and I really appreciate that, but that is a cost to the district. That's a loss of what we're trying to do as a local district, because now we have this other state. And, and I understand and I support a new way to evaluate teachers and all of us. I mean, we need to be accountable, we need to have better results, we need to have that. But I think, once again, my, my fear is, the mandates from the state continue to come down, and there's never any talk about how those mandates are going to be funded. And I think that's an issue for the state legislators to at least start recognizing, then when you pass a law and there are requirements, who's going to fund them? That question sometimes is never asked.
And just to add to that, it's not just the cost of the resources that we have, that, you know, they have their jobs to do, but now we've asked them to do all this extra, but it's a cost of, we have to pay for that training, that, that the state did not allocate enough funds for every single employee that has to be evaluated, is my understanding of that, too.
Well, luckily for us, we were able to use all of our slots and did not have to pay extra for any slots, as of right now. Now, there's a question about if we have new administrators come on board, do we have to pay for those new slots for the training? So that's one issue. That one didn't hit us very hard. I think we were able to allocate pretty well. The bigger issue is just the manpower issue and going into the future. I mean, there's some real questions, and I'll just use elementary principles. For the amount of assessment they are going to have to do with teachers and the number of teachers they have on an evaluation basis, can they realistically evaluate all the staff, or are they going to need extra personnel help in order to accomplish that? We don't know that yet, but in some of the buildings, if they have many new teachers who are under four years' experience, they're evaluating those teachers three times a year in a formal evaluation, writing those up. If I have 20, you can start doing the math, 20 times three times evaluations, we're going to have some principals really hard pressed to get that done, and I think that's going to be an issue.
Ms. Hirsch?
Dave, this might seem an odd request, but I think that if it's at all possible for you and your team to give us a rough estimate in terms of the investment in time, that it has cost District 205 to implement this new teacher evaluation, evaluation training system, the training dictated and required by the state. I think it's a rough ballpark. If we can, I mean, we know how much, you know, our employees make on a daily basis, and we know we can, we can figure out and on the back of the envelope, come up with the amount of dollars of our staff time, and not only that, our staff time that has been invested over the summer, but as well, the opportunity cost. We could have used all of those hours for doing the work that we have already piled on all of our administrators' plates and the things that we're looking to do locally to move our student performance and experiences forward. And I think when we do start meeting with legislators, I think that they should hear from District 205, we're a decent-sized district, we have 600-plus teachers, and the cost to train our administrative staff to perform the, to be trained for the evaluations costs us X number of dollars. And I think if you can stand to take two minutes or five minutes and figure out the math and come back to us, I think that's valid data for us to pass along to the state so they understand the ramifications of this.
Yeah, I think that's possible. I think the, the administrators can estimate what those hours are right off the bat, because it's been a long process. Charles and Meg, any?
The modules alone.
Be 1,872.
That's just the modules, that's not actually going out there.
Roughly. Not that, not that they're counting.
I just, I just want to clarify, it's 1,872 hours.
It's just the training and some of the testing over two hours.
But that is for each individual person, employee in our district.
Each administrator.
Each administrator who is going to evaluate a, a teacher. That's the amount of time.
Is that per administrator or is that a total aggregate?
Hours sitting in front of the computer, getting the modules digested, if you will, but actually putting it into practice, I would say is going to take three times out of them.
Yeah, but that thousand-plus hours is in aggregate for what all of our administrators have spent. Okay. Mrs. Derone?
Just for the record, there were 47 individuals who are involved in the training.
Forty-seven there to thirty-six.
Yeah. It's well over 2,000, but it was hot out this summer and being indoors in the air conditioning. My administrative team has no life, so they're social.
Mrs. Derone, you had a question?
Just have one more comment back to this. I'm ringing this budget out to the bitter end. I appreciate all that you said, and I, I am so sensitive to the injustice of unfunded mandates this year and every other year that I have been on the board. That is not new. What is new is presenting this board with an unbalanced budget, and that's why I'm trying to get my arms around why. And I hear it as this hospital wild card this time, because already now, we're going into this year looking at almost $2 million with the cuts. By the time we suit up all the classrooms with appropriate teachers after next Monday, we'll be close to $2 million already in the hole for next year without any of the bad news that this year's going to bring from the state or any other wild card out there. And that's, that's not a good place to be. So I just want to, I just want to frame that in that way for the public, for us and for the public.
Well, in the timing of this, part of this was the timing. If we would have known that, that this whole process was going to happen and was going to hit us this year, we probably would have been back to the board this past year and said, we're not cutting this amount, we're adding 2 million more to the budget. We had already done the budget cuts, we did not get word of what was going to happen with the hospital until June, July, we started to get word that this was going to go faster. If you remember, it was tied up in the legislature, then it was in the courts, and then all of a sudden, it got settled to our surprise, they came up with the criteria, and now they're in the process of evaluating the hospitals. Frankly, if we would have known that, you know, hindsight, we would have added another $2 million to the budget cuts, as painful as they were last year, it would have been $2 million more. So that is why we're going to end up with an unbalanced budget this year, and here we are. The only alternative we would have right now is to start looking at how we could cut the budget at this point in time, which would be very difficult, because we've turned on the faucet of running the school district with a certain criteria.
Well, that's just it. At this point, I mean, it's important to note that we can make substantive changes in our budget right now if we're going to start school. I mean, we could decide to turn on all the lights all winter or not heat the buildings, but I mean, we have contracts, we have obligations, we have children to educate, and we now have to look at next year to make this up. I guess it's the only point I'm trying to make, and, and we're starting out already in the hole.
If I can add my perspective to that, the, the number that, that I focus on and that keeps me up at night, so to speak, is what that low fund balance is on May 31st of each year. And that's the key number in our budget. We start out with a guideline of 25% to 30% on July 1st, so that, that number is above zero on May 31st. And the policy, or the finance committee has spent quite a bit of time talking about what that target for that May 31st fund balance should be, and the policy committee said 3% to 5%, or the, the finance committee said 3% to 5% is a comfortable margin. Now, we were at about 7.5% in this past fiscal year, and that is about a $2.5 million, a $2.5 million above where the highest point in the comfort range is. So to say that for one year, we're unbalanced, basically what we've done, because this board made some substantial cuts for several years now and made some very hard decisions, we did end up with $7.5 million in the bank on May 31st, 2012. And this, the delta we're looking at at the hospital is about $2.5 million, you know, depending. That would bring our fund balance, May 31st, 2013, to about $5 million if, if we have, you know, if all other things fall in line. So, and Mr. Bloom, you had something as well?
Yeah, on a similar vein, I mean, Chris, correct me if I'm reading this wrong, but at the end of fiscal 2011, the operating fund balance was 29% of annual expenditures two years ago. This past year was 33.4. Our target is 25 to 30, and your budget projects it still at 31. So it's down from 33, but still above where it was two years ago. We think this is prudent, we're not happy with unbalanced budgets, but given the environment, and I think some of that's owing to factors that we were talking about. I mean, we did collect the $2 million from the, from the hospital, so that's, that was in the fund balance that Jim talked about. The state gave us one extra reimbursement that was in the fund balance that we talked about. So there were some timing issues that have given us the flexibility. So that budget number, while it's negative and looks significant, if you start to back out some of the timing issues, it is still negative, but it is not as significantly negative as you would think from an operating perspective. And we're still in, I think, prudent financial position, wouldn't want to keep doing this, but, I mean, this is, this is where we are today.
On a prolonged basis, it's bad governance, but in a one-time situation, we are prepared to take that, that hit financially. Let me, Mrs. Ebner has her hand up, let me.
The, Chris, the document we submit to the state, we are submitting a balanced budget. I was there for the operating funds only, so we're showing a balanced budget to the state? What we're submitting, the legal budget?
You, you looked at that page in the legal budget that.
Yeah, it says, it says balanced budget.
That, that particular page takes.
The whole, the.
That particular page takes into consideration our fund balances also. So it, it's not looking at just strictly revenues compared to expenditures. It also takes into consideration our fund balances. So that, that according with, with the state, it's balanced, but they, they take our fund balances into consideration then.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I just want to point out, another way to look at this is that we are actually spending down the fund balance. We, we got a little bit high on the fund balance at 33% due to unanticipated, you know, circumstances, and while we don't, you know, we can maintain a balanced budget every year, but if we have unanticipated revenues, we have, from many people's perspective, an obligation to spend down those funds. And in this case, what we're doing is we're spending down, through a strange concoction of things that have fallen into place, but we are spending down our fund balance by about $1 million. Now, the other question I would, I would put is another one of those unknowns, is the state legislatures meeting on Friday? I don't know anybody has a lot of confidence that Friday's meeting is going to come with a resolution to the pension challenge, but if you could just give us an update, my last understanding is that we are, feel fairly certain that this fiscal year that we have just begun, we do not anticipate any pension funding requirements coming to the district. I just want to confirm that. If anything, it would begin for next fiscal year, and that's a consideration, you know, again, looking at our fund balance, looking at what our new obligations might possibly be for next fiscal year. Is that right?
Are you looking for a guarantee?
No guarantee, just your best estimate.
Everything that we have heard, even when the pension discussion occurred in the last session, there was never any talk of hitting the districts, if the districts were going to pay more in pension costs, of it occurring in this coming school year. That was never what was discussed. It was always discussed in the 14, 15 school year at the earliest. So taking those discussions previously, I would have a hard time believing they are going to pass a Pension Reform Act that will penalize school districts in the current year, when school districts are already in the process of planning budgets. 14, 15, it's a possibility, but I don't see that happening this year.
And as our land representative, all the information that I have heard and seen in writing, it's July 2013, which coincides with what Dave is saying, the fiscal school year 2014, 14, 15.
13, 14.
Shall we move on to district performance indicators?
At our, at our, at the board retreat and workshop that we held, we had finalized the key performance indicators for the school district. And for the audience, these are our accountability standards that we will be reporting to the public and the Board of Education, and is an indication of how the district is doing on those key indicators over a length of time. We are benchmarking ourselves with these key performance indicators, and then we are setting future targets of where we want to improve for each one of those target performance indicators. We also have other indicators that we're not going to share tonight, but the other district performance indicators underneath these are subsets of these performance indicators that. that will help us, guide us into that improvement process, so that we're looking at leading indicators that may affect a key performance indicator, and we monitor those over time so that there is some substantive data that we can look at to say, are we moving toward the improvement areas that we want to based on our present benchmark and going into the future? Are the strategies we're using, are the resources we're allocating, are programs we are developing, are they going to have an effect on that improvement process for each one of those key performance indicators? So the board spent a lot of time discussing these key performance indicators. They have reviewed them at least three times, and these are the final performance key indicators that the board has agreed upon. And all the changes from our last workshop are reflected in those key indicators that you have in front of you this evening. So this evening, what we'd like to do is start the discussion on where, what key performance indicators do we think we really need to focus on as a district for goal-setting for the coming school year? What are those areas that the board really wants the district administrative team, staff and faculty to really start looking at and focusing on improvement in those areas? And so that's what the basis of the discussion is this evening. So with that, I would turn over to the Board of Education to start that discussion.
Mrs. Hirsch.
I'm not ready to start the discussion. I just have a request to make on the student learning and achievement. When we identify one of the things that interests me, the achievement gap, first of all, I appreciate the administration adding the data source for each of these things that we're going to be measuring, identifying those, as well as the timing of it. That really helps us understand when we should expect to see this information and be prepared to review it. But on the achievement gap, we, the reference for our current state, it says, "See the gaps" tab. So at some point, it would be helpful to actually see what our current assessment is on the, on the achievement gaps that we've identified.
Start, okay. The ACT, Charles, I have a question. Are we targeting 80% above the 25 score? Or we're not, we're, we're not doing that anymore? Is, is it the average 25, or we're going for 80% at the 25 level?
It's a trajectory target of 25.
So an average?
25, 80% of our students reaching the 25 or better. No, I'm sorry, it is a composite average.
So what happened to the 80%?
Well, I, Dr. Johns, if you, I, I know in our Curriculum Committee, we had talked about a goal of 80% of our students reaching a college-ready ACT score of 23 or above. And that would indicate a, a class average. Is that what the number worked out, to a class average, which is with the number you posted here, of 25? If 80% of our students score a 23 or better?
If, if you'll recall, and Jim, to a degree, you're correct. If you'll recall, the 80% threshold that was part of a trajectory is a very long-term target. This is a short-term target where we're, we're forecasting out, or for lack of a better word, forecasting out to the 16, 17 school year. To get 80% of our students to a 25, in my expansive imagination, would take about eight years.
And, you know, if I, oh, sure, go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Ebner.
Be better than, I thought we would lower, we lowered that number to get, we didn't want to work with the average, then we lower the ACT score. Okay, 80% at 23 or 24 means a lot more than an average of 25.
We felt if we got 80, 80% of our students to a 24, then all likelihood, our overall average would be considerably higher than a 25.
And to put it in perspective, if I, and I'm going off the top of my head, so please correct me. It seems like the best high school in Illinois, the class average is a 27 ACT. There are then a couple, or maybe three, high schools who score a 26 on average. So 25 would put us in a very elite group of high schools.
Personally, I think we're already in an elite group of high schools, but that would put us at, at very, very elite status.
Thank you for that clarification. Mrs. Hirsch.
I do want to follow up on, on Mrs. Ebner's question, because I think, I know that you and, and Charles Brandl spent a lot of time coming up with and studying our data and presenting the 80% rule. And I, I'm not, I don't have a real strong opinion whether the target in 16, 17 should be 25, or it should be 80% of. But I, I think there was a lot of discussion, and from my personal perspective, value in saying, "We don't want to look at it as an average. We want to look at it as, we want to move all of our kids. We don't want to benefit from a couple of really strong 30, perfect 36s and make it okay that their 36s are balancing the kids that aren't college and career-ready." So I think there was a lot of value in the discussion that we had around the 80%. Do you feel as though if we leave the metric as it is, that we lose that? I think part of the discussion, at least what I took away, was there was value in communicating that throughout the organization. And if we don't, in our, at the board level, put it in that way, I don't want you to lose support and momentum, because I do believe, and maybe I'm speaking out of term, but I think the board supported the idea of not relying on an average, but really focusing on moving all kids forward. So what do you think about that?
As Dave mentioned, or Mr. Bruno mentioned in kind of the, the intro to this conversation, there are other indicators that we'll be tracking as an organization. And so the, the 80% threshold, the long arc trajectory, and to explain the trajectory is we're looking for a way to reverse organ, reverse engineer throughout the organization, getting 80% of our students ready for college by the time they graduate from high school, York High School, and extending that target line all the way down to the lower levels of elementary school, so that the entire district sees the, kind of a connection to the endpoint, which is getting students ready for college. This is essential to us because we need this trajectory line in order to set levels of rigor for our curriculum through the entire system. So it, it therefore becomes almost the, the very spine of our entire instructional program. So it is really an operational feature. It isn't something that we could, could ignore. Off of this comes our RTI system. It helps us set levels for identifying students who need additional supports, whether it be in the classroom or outside of the classroom, in more rigorous support systems. So it is certainly not something that's going to get forgotten. It was, I spoke to the new teachers about it yesterday. I'm on slate for the middle school teachers on Thursday. It is something that is, I'm sure people will become weary of hearing after a while, which is my goal. And not to make them weary, but for them to be that.
Mr. McDonough.
Just wondering if you could unpack that term of art, "college-ready," because I think a higher percentage of your kids head to college after York.
Thanks for, for inquiring on that. What, what that figure gives us, about a 24, 25 on the ACT, gives us a very, very high percentage that students are going to be able to graduate within five years from a reasonably rigorous university or college. So it, it's not necessarily a five-year graduation from an Ivy League school or a Stanford, but of a school of a major, maybe a major state university within five years. I don't know why they picked five instead of four. Maybe it's the, the modern reality. Obviously, there's a range of colleges and universities where you can get into with much lower scores. I ask that we fixate on trying to increase the likelihood that students are actually going to graduate from college, because I think that has a big bearing on our families.
Yeah, let me just clarify. So Dave, you're, we have eight indicators here. So you want us to prioritize these eight? Is that what you're?
Yeah. What I'd like to do is, you know, we're going to focus on all of these. So that's a given. But I think, you know, the research is pretty clear, that districts that move forward significantly, focusing on achievement, indicate a minimal number of goals that they're really going to focus on, on the short term. Because if you do across the waterfront, the research seems to indicate organizations don't focus. You know, there's too many, too many goals, there's no focus. So what we want to do is, is have a clear focus on, on what we think is really important that we should really focus on, on the short term. And, and I guess, you know, and Charles can, can certainly, you know, add his opinion, but I think on this list, I think you've talked about ACT. I think, as, as Charles has said, it's the spine of where we're going when it comes to focusing on college readiness for all students. And again, I want to emphasize, it's not that every student we expect to go to college. But we think that kids who are prepared to do well on this kind of rigorous exam have the great skills across the board to take on a new career, to develop into a productive citizen, no matter where they go, whether it's college or right to a career, because what the ACT tests is problem-solving skills, literacy skills, understanding information, applying it to new situations. Those are all skills that we believe are 21st century skills. So I think the ACT would certainly be one to really focus on. I think the other one that really strikes me, and this is just personally, is the, the MAP scores for the elementary and middle school. Because again, that's the supporting information that goes to the ACT. And as you see there, we have a high standard. We are trying to get a number of kids above the 65th percentile on the MAP test, not the 50th percentile. 50th percentile means half of the students on a national average score above that score, 50% below. So that is exactly the average. We want to raise that bar to say 50 percentile is not good enough. We want most of our students in the 65th percentile. And, and that's where the 80%, Charles, comes in?
Yeah, that gets us in that direction.
Yeah. So again, and you can see where we are. We have some big gaps there. When you look at our, our MAP scores on reading and math at the elementary and middle school level, we are not approaching that. So I think that's a great focus for us to look at. And again, that goes, then we have across the system, a clear goal of where we're going.
Just want to clarify, are you, are you looking at number seven, or is it the students meeting typical growth, or students on track for college and career readiness? Which one were you?
I am looking at students on track for college and career readiness.
Okay. Okay.
You know, I, I agree with you. I, I was going to say that the, the ACT and then that, once students on track for college readiness, because if we can boost the kids up at elementary level, then a lot of, of these others fall into place. For instance, advanced placement. If we can raise the level of achievement at the elementary level, that is going to move on down to middle school, then high school, and then we'll have more kids taking advanced placement classes. That, that would be one of my top areas to focus on.
Yeah, I, I would concur with you, Mrs. Ebner. It seems that if we track kids for college and career readiness, that if we succeed in that, that the ACT will be purely, will come from, our success in ACT score will come from that. And if our goal truly is to prepare these kids for college, the advanced placement participation, because advanced placement is college, college-level classes, to experience at least one by the time you graduate from high school, using the high school, the safety net that's at the high school, in terms of success in the, in AP classes, seems to me to be the way to make sure that a kid is ready for college-level rigor. Mrs. Stufan?
I agree. Although to, Mr. Johns' point, you know, the objective is for them to graduate to college too. So I do understand that we're looking at advanced placement as the participation rate, but at some point, and I know some of the backup data is, how well are our students doing in the AP class? And that really ties to, do they graduate from, from college versus getting in? Go ahead.
If I can support your point, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's in the, the mid-60%. If a student takes an AP class and passes it, and passes the test, of their being able to graduate on time with a good GPA.
Mrs. Hirsch.
Dr. Johns, help me. I'm getting lost between the bottom two. The first one is students on track for college and career readiness. My understanding is that we're using MAPS and the PSAE, and we've got our numbers here, but I'm not sure the students meeting typical growth. I'm trying to differentiate those two.
They are confusing, and we might want to make sure that we add a little bit of a narrative to this. The, the, is that number seven, on track for college and career readiness? That is referring to students meeting the level of our trajectory. Okay? So that we've, we've taken the college readiness scores, backed, backed them through the system. That's a percentage of students who are meeting those levels. And the next one, students meeting typical growth, NWEA MAP, based on a student's initial score, forecasts what they believe the student's score will be at a later test. And so the numbers here are, and they call that meeting typical, they call that typical growth. And it is really keystone for an individual score on the first assessment. So this is the percentage of our students who are meeting typical growth. Ballpark, you want to be within a percentage or two of 50%, because you'd expect about 50% to exceed typical growth, and, and a corresponding percentage to, to fail to meet typical growth. So that's the difference, but it, it looks confusing here. Minimally, we should separate them on a page.
I, I think I, I, my first initial was, let's make sure that all of our students are at a minimum meeting typical growth. I think that is going to move the majority of students, but I've been convinced that we should use our spine and our 80% target in the work that you've done. So I have no problem supporting the students on track for college and career readiness, looking at the performance trajectory. But my concern is that I don't know what our gaps are. And I think our achievement gaps are one of the concerns that we've always had. And without having that data in front of me, it's hard for me to, you know, I, I think we've had lengthy discussions about if we can identify and close our achievement gaps, that is as well going to move those students ahead. And so I'm, without having the data and knowing what our achievement gaps are, I could look at one and say, "Wow, that's really huge, and I really think we should focus on that this year." So I, I'm fine with, you know, supporting the ACT and the students on track for college and career readiness, but the achievement gap worries me.
Due to the, the small size of our subgroups, there tends to be a lot of variability. So that's why Charles had put it on a separate page. We have the new data over the summer, and I think we'll find there's a lot of variability in that, that there are some of our subgroups whose performance fell from last year to this year noticeably. And, and that's something that I can bring back in September. It was, it was to be a part of our normal data report that we bring to the board. It's a late summer aggregation that we do.
Can I ask for clarification? So if we're saying, I mean, Mrs. Ebner and you, Mr. Collins, had talked about if we say, "Students on track for college and career readiness," and ACT, and advanced placement, that we can hit the E-PAS growth based on our performance trajectory philosophy? Yes or no?
Yes. If we're getting all of our, our levels up, then, and that gives us a pretty good confidence. I, I don't think I can say statistical confidence, but gives us really good confidence that if throughout the system, we're getting more and more students to get to that level of threshold, by the time they get to their junior, senior year, they should be able to perform a pretty high score. Research done by, by Charles, by two well-known of his colleagues in the state, and by one of the scientists for NWEA MAPS and from ACT, all point the trajectory now is seemingly makes. makes, not seemingly, makes sense, that it is, it is something that will work.
So if you look at the performance trajectory, then the e-Pass growth should actually show that same trajectory, is what you're saying?
Yes. It should work from grade school all the way through high school. The one thing that would really potentially change things for us, and it'll be interesting to see how this happens this year, is that we've got really good explore scores coming in with our new incoming freshmen. They have a very high incoming explore score. And it'll be interesting to see how that plays out through high school. Typically, what you can find in some of ACT's research is that an initial explore score typically means that those kids already scoring high will even grow more than average of a nationwide sample. So it'll be interesting to see what happens there. That might disturb, that might disrupt some of our planning a little bit, because we've got a very high-scoring class that just came in.
Now, from the discussion we're having here, I mean, I can sense consensus, at least of the people who've spoken on the board so far, is this what you're looking, is this kind of discussion what you're looking for? Do you want us to formally, you know, define consensus, arrive at consensus, direct us in what will help you?
I think what we're looking for is just informal consensus from the board, that we're looking at those goals that we're really going to focus on as a first priority. Again, we're going to be looking at all these goals, but the first priority going into this coming year, what I'm hearing is, we want to look at Advanced Placement, we want to look at ACT, and we want to look at the Students on Track for College and Career Readiness as evaluated by MAP.
Mr. Torni?
Do we just get three? If we only get three, I really would like to see that achievement gap get some emphasis, as opposed to the Advanced Placement. I mean, if we've got to pick and choose here.
No, there's no, there's no limit. I don't want to say, you know, I would say this. I don't think you want to get, do all of these, because again, my fear is it gets lost in the message you want to send to all staff. But certainly, I'm hearing, let's look at the achievement gap information and revisit that one. So I would say those three, with the possibility that when you see the achievement gap information, you may want to set one of those as one of your targets.
I would actually consider removing the AP in terms of our top priorities. Only, not that, again, not that it's not important, and not that we're not tracking it. But if we're focused on college and career readiness, I think the thing that I like the most about this particular goal is that it goes throughout all of our levels within the organization. And I think college and career readiness, that's almost one of the expectations, and I think the high school has already done a very good job of setting parents' and students' expectations that, you know, as you leave York High School, the majority of students are, you know, expecting, expected to take at least one AP course. I think that has been a directive from the board in the past. I'm not saying, again, it's not important. But I think the narrower the band we can make and emphasize, the, hopefully, the stronger the impact it's going to have.
Before I call on Mr. McDonough, let me just add, there are nine things on the page we're looking at. We've identified four that we've consistently talked about. Is four too many to pursue out of nine?
You know, and this category, this is the heart of the school district. So I think it's very appropriate to have four on this. I would say you may want to not look at so many on some of the other pages, just because, again, if we end up with four times five, you're looking at 20 goals, I think that becomes unwieldy sometimes. So, but I certainly, this is curriculum, this is instruction, this is teaching and learning, this is student achievement. It's the heart of what we do.
Please.
I think three of the four define this trajectory approach. And so really, the three are poking around this one major concept that isn't any particular DPI. And then achievement gap is really important, because it supplements the similarity of what those other three are trying to accomplish. That's the way I feel about it.
Yeah. I mean, in our strategies too, and one of the things, if we're looking at increasing achievement across the district, we're going to have to look at the achievement scores, because those are the students that are lagging behind that we need to pull up. And it's appropriate for us to look at a specific group and say, that achievement gap is so large, we want to focus on that group of students, because those students are really at risk. That's appropriate. But I think overall, what Charles and the whole district is going to be focused on is RTIs, Response Interventions, for that particular group of students that is really underperforming, and asking the question, why are they underperforming? What resources are we using? Why isn't it being effective? How can we increase those and decrease those achievement gaps? Achievement gaps are notoriously very difficult to decrease. But at the same time, they are worthy of goal-setting, because I think it goes to the heart of all kids achieving throughout the district.
Mr. Bloom, you had something?
This is John.
Okay. I mean, is that the kind of direction you're looking for?
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, also, if I can point out, I mean, we'll be tracking all nine of these things, right?
Yes.
And if I can just point out two of them that we haven't talked about, that I'm really glad to see them on here, is fine arts elective participation, and that we have a rich curriculum in all of our schools. And that because it is one of the nine things we're tracking, and I'm going to put new century participation in that same category. Students enrolling in world language, science, engineering, technology, and math, and unified arts electives, just points out the richness of our curriculum, how fortunate our community is that we can, that we can afford a diverse and rich curriculum, and that, in fact, we're watching how many of our kids and participate in those kinds of educational activities, and that we encourage the growth of participation in those educational activities. I think is important to point out, and is an advantage that an Elmhurst education can give our students.
Anything, any others in this area? Student learning and achievement. Then I'm going to suggest we move on. You have another group. It's called Operations and Organizational Effectiveness. This is a combination of business department, food service department, and transportation. One caveat for the board, and I know the board knows this, you will see a lot of the units of measure indicated by a survey. We have not done the survey, although the Board of Education has talked about doing a district-wide survey this fall. And just so we don't have, as you know, we don't have any data for the survey. But we do have plans to recommend to the board that a survey of all of our students, all of our parents, and all of our teachers be done this fall, again, as a baseline data for a lot of the survey information that you're going to see on this. And the reason we want to do that is, the level of satisfaction for our employees, for our students, and our parents, I think is an important indicator of overall satisfaction that people feel about a school district. So while we want to emphasize student achievement, there is the softer side of this, which is how satisfied are they when they're in our school district? How satisfied are parents with the service they receive? How do our teachers and our employees feel about working in the district? Because again, if they feel valued, if they feel they're being heard, if they feel valued, then I think it goes naturally that we're going to increase our student achievement, because you've got people who have the right tools to do the job that they want to do. So that's why that percentage is going to be important at some point. But that's just to point that out, that when we look at the percentage of survey, that's going to be done tentatively in the fall. Anything on this page the board wants to earmark?
I do have one question. At one point, we talked about under Operations Organization, using our, the district's credit rating, which looks at many factors of the financial health of the district as one indicator, and that seems to have dropped off of your...
It's later.
Oh, it's later, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you.
Dave, can I just comment on the survey discussion? I concur that it's very important, I think especially to the board, for us to have a complete, as complete as we can get, picture of the satisfaction of various levels of parent, staff, and students' interaction with the district. I think as board members, we might tend to hear from the select few who are comfortable or more vocal, and reach out to board members, reach out to the administration. And I think we hear of a small minority of parents, you know, students, staff, constituents, in terms of their overall satisfaction with the district. And I think the emphasis should be to encourage complete staff participation, complete, as complete as we can make, whether it's six or 12 student participation, and really strongly encourage parent participation, so that we can have a more complete and full, you know, understanding of what the majority of our parents and constituents feel about the district. So I think that's, you know, we can, we hear those loud voices, but that's not always reflective of the majority, I think. So I think the survey is a very good investment.
Turning to the next one, if we focus on key performance indicators for human resources, you have a list in front of you, some of the data we don't have right now. So we're UCNA, we have not collected that data so far. But we are, do have plans to fill in that with current data this coming school year. So again, interested in board reaction to the human resource performance indicators.
I really advocate for the retention rates, because it's costly to recruit and hire and train new hires. And it, if we look at this, it has us, has us evaluate further what our hiring practices are, and to get better at the front end versus the back end. So I think retention rates are very important.
I think the other one, given the changes in the teacher evaluation system, it might be a premature to attempt to measure, but I think the teacher performance growth, our percentage of staff that are satisfied with the professional development. I know that we're a little probably understaffed in our ability to deliver the type of professional development that we would like to be able to deliver to the staff. But I think that's something, given the shift, and I think my personal perspective is that the goal of the teacher evaluation system is ongoing and continued professional development support, feedback to our teaching staff, the people who are in front of our kids every day. And we want to see that grow. So I don't know, it might be too difficult to try to track that and have that be the priority for this year. I'd be very interested to hear your feedback on whether we could do that or not. The other thing that I missed, the only other thing on the previous page, the transportation, I'm a little nervous, maybe we should just track that, given that we have a new transportation provider. That might be something that, or maybe just earlier on in the months, that's just part of the normal oversight that the team, you know, but given that we've made a significant change with transportation this year, it might be something that we need to track.
All right. I have a question about retention rates. We have a lot of current data that just says NA on it. We have no way, we have no way to go back and track what that was.
No, not at this point. I've talked to Brad, and the data is just not there. So, you know, he is going to start collecting that data, but when it comes to new teacher retention and that, and it may be there in the system, we're just not able to find it right now.
Anything else on this? Let's move on.
Then why don't we switch to technology? Again, a list that Dave Smith has talked to the board about with the Technology Department, looking at those.
I have very high confidence in Dave's team and the service levels that Dave's been able to provide. The one thing that I might attract some attention to is the equitability of interactive technology access, or overall the accessibility and the equity that we have across buildings. I know that we've made an effort to try to balance out, but I think that variability, maybe Dave could explain what the 104% might indicate in terms of our equitability gap.
Yeah, that's an indicator of the on-level sort of funding or revenue sources that are available right now to provide the new interactive technologies, such as smart boards, and iPods and iPads, and also clickers, and things like that. So because in the recent years, the, almost exclusively, those technologies have been provided by either donations, grants, or in some cases, some special ed funding. And so it's been difficult for the district to try to keep the equitability in place. So that high percentage, what that really says is that the, there are, really what that is, is the variance from the average. So there's, there are buildings that are twice as far ahead as other buildings in this district, basically, in terms of the amount of interactive technology, from a, really from a dollar, looking at it from a dollar standpoint, from an investment, a measure in terms of dollars. So I don't know if I'm being clear or not, but really what we're saying is there are some buildings that are twice as far ahead as other buildings in this district. And so one of the things that we're doing to close that gap is, especially like this year is an example, but hopefully, I think we're going to have to continue to do this in the future, is to, when we deploy technology from a district, is to, is to really fill those gaps and address where we have those needs. And it's not always just making everybody have the same thing, but looking at the buildings and what their needs are, and trying to maybe tailor some of that technology to those, to those needs as well. But anyway, so that's a long answer, but we know there's a problem. We understand how it became, how it came to be. And I think our job is to track it, and then narrow that gap, and try to make access to this technology as fair to everybody, all students in the district. So.
I think this one might, given that some of the funding differential is coming from outside sources, it might be one of the things that we highlight in communicating with our partners, with the PTAs, with the PTA Council, with foundation, that help offer. I mean, we absolutely are appreciative of those things, but I think that if that is, if that, you know, that's just me speaking, but if that is one of our priorities and we've agreed to track it, I think that's something that we should share and communicate with those partners that help us fund that.
Anything else on this one? Okay, then why don't we turn to financial planning? Communication and Community Relations.
The unique thing on here is the Business Community Education Partnerships, which I think that might be an influence from you, Dave, coming from a prior district, where I think that you had a lot of success in this arena. I think this is something that could assist us in terms of resources availability, of expertise. I think there's the STEM initiative, there's a number of things that are kind of in their infancy, and I think that that's something that I'm very interested in seeing how we can move that forward to improve the overall experience for our kids. So that's one that I'm interested in following.
It's both, yeah. Mm-hmm. And we've talked about that one.
Mr. McDonough?
I'm not sure that I understand how that relates to communications. It's something that seems to be an end in itself, as opposed to something central to this greater idea of communicating, yeah, communicating and engaging the community. It seems like none of these really hit that central, maybe perhaps the bottom one, the survey respondents, but that seems very limited. So I'm not sure that any of these capture that essence that we're trying to get to.
I think when we, these were first presented, these were really from the administration's perspective, not necessarily the board. perspective, not necessarily the board's efforts in terms of community relations and community outreach. And I think this is really primarily, if I'm, if I'm correct in this, this is the, the projects and the efforts that are driven by Malia, not necessarily the board's engagement with the community. I don't know that we ever came up with, is that what you're trying to specify?
No, I'm not talking about board engagement with the community. I'm talking about generally the communication of the district with the, the community. And it just doesn't seem to capture that essential.
It talks about internal communication, which is part of that function, talks about external communications through the survey, and then it talks about alumni connectivity, of which, yeah, we have a long way to go there. And that's just something that hasn't been emphasized in the past. And then the business community education partnership, that is, I mean, that's something brand new for us. I mean, I think if you can do all four of those well, you're, you're doing a really good job in the communications and community relations department.
It's kind of hard to pick one when all four.
It is hard to pick one, yes. I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
Again, we're going to be, again, working on all four. So, you know, these are all important for communication. We don't disagree. It's just a discussion tonight, does the board want us to emphasize one over, one or two over the other three? Or the board can say, we want you working on all of them, we're not going to set it as a goal, but, and again, remember, we're going to be reporting out on these key performance indicators at least on a yearly basis. So you're going to see where we're going and what the progress is on all of these. It's, it's the ones that we're going to select as goals, we're going to be having more discussions on, okay, what are the strategic plans that we need to put in place to start really pushing the ball on those as a first priority? And then eventually coming back to the board for resource allocation, when we talk to staff and faculty and brainstorming on how they think we can improve these areas, coming back to the board and saying, you've, you've made these a priority, now let's talk about the resources and the alignment that we need to have those happen.
Mr. Stufan.
To that end, Dave, I like all four of them. And underneath alumni relations, I think it's very important for us to continue to keep a strong relationship with the District 205 Foundation and talk about our needs, like we said, with the interactive technology and any sources that we can partner with that can help us achieve that objective.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing, let's make communication and community relations just an overall goal that we're going to track and emphasize overall.
The more progress we can make in any of these categories, the better off we are.
That's fine. And then the final one is financial planning.
I, I like the credit rating, that, that's, that's very good, but also the, the low point ratio, I mean, this is, this is what tells us if we need to borrow money or not, and we want to avoid that. So this is one that I would like to look closely at, the low point ratio.
I think in this, I mean, these are all interrelated. I mean, you have to do them all together. You have to balance the budget in order to keep your operating fund balances in line with the annual expenses. The cash flow low point ratio will be an impact of whether you're balanced budget or not, which is going to contribute to a very good financial score, which ultimately contributes to a good credit rate. So I, I don't think you can pick one of these. It's like, we want prudent financial management for the district, which means that you have to do all of these things because it's a math problem.
Right, right. It seems like if you, if you do number two well, that's going to dictate what number one starts out at, right? And if you do number three well, your credit rating is going to be good. So they are all interrelated, I agree. Mrs. Ebner.
But one thing that really hasn't been communicated well is the low point ratio. We always see in different media outlets or newspaper, internet, what that fund balance is, the 29%, the 33%, but we, you really don't see this, this very important figure that means so much, you know, our low point balance out in, you know, more, and communicated well.
I, I agree. You know, this is a balance between not having to borrow from next year's budget to pay this year's bills and not being so conservative that you have a lot of money left over. Not that you're, in, in other words, not overtaxing our taxpayers to support what we need to, to support to educate our children. So I would agree, that is a key metric in my mind, as I stated earlier. But it is very intertwined with, with the operating fund balances on, on July 1st.
I think the only thing that I might add, and it's not actually listed here, and it's not, it's, it's reflected in all of them, is, and I think that we've done a relatively good job this budget year of trying to anticipate and predict what the variability or what the, the surprises are, whether it's pension funding, whether it's real estate tax appeals and refunds, whether it's the state and their funding levels. I think this board has done a very good job of attempting to stay on top of the issues that are the outliers, the things that are going to throw the budget, you know, out of whack. And I think that all of these things are important, but I think a continued monitoring and reporting on the outliers, on the surprises, on the exceptions to our typical budgeting process that are the things that could throw us off. I think, you know, in that, in these efforts, you know, in an attempt to attain and maintain a balanced budget, we, we need to continue to do a good job of tracking these large events that throw us off.
And you're right, it, it is what keeps this interesting in that, you know, you're, we're driving down the road and the car is in the center of the lane, but then we get a 90 mile an hour side wind all the time, and our job is to keep the car in the center of the lane.
Chris, you got all of them.
I think I added one.
Yeah, there, there's only four. Dr. Johns has nine.
No, there's five.
I'm sorry, there is five. I apologize.
Thanks for your discussion. Before we move on, I would ask the board's tolerance in pulling out, going off the agenda a little bit. We have a new administrator that is under your personnel report this evening that we're asking the board to confirm tonight, but it's getting late and she's been patiently sitting there. And so what I'd like to do is just to introduce her. Gina, if you want to stand up. This is Gina Poe-Greeter. She is the new assistant principal at Churchville Middle School, and as I said, she's going to be on your consent agenda tonight for the appointment as the assistant principal at Churchville. She's replacing Melissa Couch. Melissa has been moved to Bryan Middle School, and so we were lucky enough to get Gina to come and be recommended this evening. Gina is a licensed clinical social worker and most recently served as a building assistant to the principal of John Sibley Elementary School in Woodridge District 68, where she was also a social worker. In addition, she has functioned as department chairperson of psychologists and social workers for the entire district. The thing that we really liked about Gina is she has a wealth of experience in positive behavior supports, a lot of response to instruction intervention models, really has a great background in, with the wellness council and working with students and community agencies, and we thought that was a real plus. She has BA in political science from the University of Illinois, a master of social work from Loyola, and an MA of educational administration from Concordia University. So I just wanted to welcome Gina, pending your confirmation this evening, and I appreciate Gina being here this evening. And Gina, thanks for your patience.
Can I have phone test? Okay, for a minute now or?
You can if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
At the board's pleasure.
Yeah, for, all right. So I'll, I'll save my welcoming Gina till after we vote.
I move, I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's personnel report as presented originally as part of the consent agenda, item A. Is there a second?
All right. Move by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. D'Erone. Since it is personnel, we need a roll call vote. So let me hand it over to Mrs. Walsh.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays. Gina, welcome.
I do want you to know that Gina came in and was at the administrative retreat with us for four brutal days, I'm sure. So I really appreciate her coming in and being part of the team right away.
You can, you can go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Get us, get us back on track here.
So you are back to approval of board meetings?
Okay. So, next on the agenda, approval of the July 10th, 2012, July 17th, 2012, and August 5th, 2012 minutes. Does anyone have any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand. Now we're on to board committee reports. Begin with Mr. Bloom and the Finance and Operations Committee.
Well, fortunately, we've covered the vast majority of what we went through at our last finance committee meeting. We talked, we talked through financial reports, both year-to-date and then the budget, all of which you've just seen. So I will skip to, where are we? Updates, budget and planning process. The, you know, from, from our perspective within the financial group, when we have our goals finalized, we want to weave that into our work plan for the coming year. We talked about that. Dave, do you want to give a brief update on the community advisory committee and kind of where we are with that?
Yeah, we are, obviously, we put out tentative calendars to the board. We have scheduled a series of meetings on a citizen advisory committee beginning in October. I appreciate the board sending me names of possible citizens who are interested in serving on the committee. And frankly, we've had a lot of interest outside of that also, from citizens, parents, staff members, who have shown an interest in serving on the committee. So I don't know what the count is right now, but it's certainly getting up there in the 25, 30 range already. So it's been a really good response, a lot of interest in being on the committee, and I think that says a lot for the community because it's a big time commitment, as I said, to meet every other week for an hour and a half, two hours every other week. So again, we're on track for doing this. We'll put out the formal invitations for acceptance probably in September with the idea of then starting the meetings in October.
Mr. McDonough.
Will that number be winnowed down in some way? And if so, how, how is that going to happen?
I'd really rather not. I think if people are interested in serving, we should try to accommodate them. If, if the committee gets so unwieldy, then we may have to look at that. But I, I think overall, I, I think people who are interested have voiced their interests already. So I'm thinking if we get up to 40 and 50, I, I think that's still manageable, and that's a lot of individuals to be on the committee. But at the same time, it's a lot of information sharing. Then we can always break them up into working committees on different topics once they have that information, and that's more doable.
I like hearing that. That's very good. Thank you.
Dave, you were worried about sitting in an empty room all alone.
That didn't happen.
The other item, and these are items that are on our long-range kind of strategic planning radar, and it's a long-term capital facilities planning. Getting an update from Chris on the facilities at the last publication, we discussed this prior meetings. He continues to have meetings, I think we're, what are we talking about? Trying to get to a draft. We don't have a date yet, but Chris has a million things going on with the budget, but we're asking him to, to start to converge on, on an idea of when we might be able to see a draft. But, so that's where that, that one is. And then, you know, TIF is, TIF is a whole board issue, but I mean, obviously, it comes up in the finance committee. You know, I think the one thing that I'll report out on is, you know, to dispel the reports to the country, there's not a tentative agreement with the city on TIF. You know, what I will say is that we've had negotiations with the city on a high level with general economic parameters being discussed. We're at a point where we're finally reducing those to paper and attempting to define key terms, mechanics, and timing. And in my mind, until those are defined, I wouldn't call it an agreement, I wouldn't call it a document even at that point. You know, hopefully, we can get there quickly, which then would allow us to tentatively agree to something. And we hope to have all of this documentation, the agreement prior to the city council vote on the ordinance, so that we both approve it at the same time. So that's my two cents. I know we've all been involved, if anybody wants to add comments.
I have spent a lot of time thinking about, as we move through this process, and I know that there was meetings last night where, where TIF has been discussed, and I just kind of wanted to share my, my personal perspective on, on what we're attempting to do. I, I think we've had a very longstanding, successful partnership with the city on a number of endeavors, as well as other governing bodies. And what we're trying to work out is a compromise with the city that is going to offer some relief for the schools, for the life of the TIF. There's some specific details out there, but I, I think the most important part from my perspective is, I'm very appreciative of the collaborative arrangement that we're trying to, to work on. We've had them in the past with the city. And over the years, we've had varying levels of documentation of these agreements. And to varying degrees, the original intentions and understandings of these agreements, at times, they can be open to interpretation. My perspective is the elected representatives of both the schools and the city will change over the life of this 23-year agreement. They clearly have for TIFs that we already have in place. And good governance dictates the need to memorialize and formally approve and adopt the detailed agreements for the benefits of both governing bodies as well as for the public. I concur with, you know, I think where we are, you know, work continues on finalizing the details, those terms of the intergovernmental agreement, and I'm looking forward to mutual approval and adoption by both, by both parties.
Yeah, one thing I'll add, Mr. Bloom's and Ms. Hirsch's comments. You know, the objective here is to have the city, the schools, and our Park District to work together to reach an agreement that's to the benefit of all of our citizens and our students in Elmhurst. So far, we make progress in every meeting. We have the big issues flushed out, but the devil is in the details. And we're delving into those details now. And to echo Mr. Bloom's comment, I think we all are very hopeful and very optimistic that we will have an agreement in place by the day that the city votes to pass the TIF, and we can have an intergovernmental agreement that can be voted on in that very same meeting. With that said, is there anyone else wants to weigh in on that topic?
Should we move on to board improvement and policy committee report? Mrs. Stufan.
Thank you. The Board Improvement Policy Committee met July 31st. I'm going to first hit the board improvement aspects of the committee meeting and then the policy. So first off, there's a, you're going to see a pattern in the last couple committee meetings and then the next couple future committee meetings so that we can close out some of our topics. The first topic being legislative engagement by the board. Last meeting, we had John Moss, who is the federal relations representative on our Lend that we're a member of for Legislative Education Network of DuPage, present from a federal perspective as well as best practices from kind of doing the legislative aspect of Glenn Bard for the last 32 years. This past meeting, we had Peg Agno- This past meeting, we had Peg Agnos, who is our Executive Director of Lend, present to us from two perspectives. One is, there's a lot of education legislation that's been going down, been going on the last couple of years. And so we wanted to get a status of the current legislative issues that are affecting education, and what's the perspective moving forward. Secondly, she has been a former board member in the 80s, and she has been part of education ever since. So she's played a lot of different roles, and so she has worked with a lot of boards, so that she is able to present some best practices of school districts and boards engaging with legislators. So to that end, what are our next steps? What we'd like to do, and what the board is going to hear more of, in a documented plan for, and we will recommend to the full board for approval, of how we would like to engage with our legislators. And it really, if you think about it, is kind of like three high-level pronged, is one, we would like to, with the superintendent, several board members, to meet with local legislators after the election in their offices when they're here, prior to going down to Springfield and advocating for us. And what we would do is some of the things that we've already talked about tonight, which is help them understand what's really going on in the school districts, and be as specific as we can. Secondly, then, we would invite them to meet with us, whether it be at a board meeting, when we're recognizing students, or in one of the schools, when we've got a major event going on, and let them see what's really going on in our specific district. And so, you know, we set the stage in the first meeting, they get to experience it the second meeting. And the third, being that Lend is going to have lobby days this upcoming year, and they would like us to help them and represent Lend in the Springfield offices periodically in the upcoming year in Springfield. So that's, you're going to hear more about that. Secondly, engagement of the board and community. We talked about two different perspectives here. One is, we just had the Meet the Board. We did a recap. We put together a draft process of how we would like to set up those Meet the Boards, you know, parameters around how we get those community concerns in. Are they customer issues? Are they true owner issues? Owner issues are board issues. That means they're systemic. That means they're prevalent across the district. And then what we do is, we meet with the administration, we prioritize, we see, you know, some of them, they already have on their priority list, others, we don't. And we have to have those discussions about validating the issues and prioritizing them, and then having a plan of action to impact and alleviate those concerns, or eliminate them, and get feedback along the way. So, you know, the theme is the process around it. So as I talk about that process, that this committee is drafting and will be recommending to the full board for approval, along with the administration, is we would like to also use that same process around community forum. So anytime we're engaging as a board with the community, we use the same process for community concerns. The key item on board meeting procedures that I'd like to highlight is, I know that we, as a board, in our committees, now that we have had them around for a year, really kind of understand more the work of the board. And we know that we have, you know, certain things that are legislated and mandated and required by us. But there's also pieces to prepare for these meetings, you know, that's done, you know, at the committee level to get ready for that final board approval. And so what we'd like to do is have all the committees reflect on the last year, and I know that they are already, but just so that everyone knows that we're going to document this, and really create an annual calendar identifying key board work. Not just the major endpoints, but some of the steps along the way, so that the community knows, the board members know, and it's on the calendars. So keep an eye out for that. Board Self-Evaluation Follow-Up, we kind of just really briefly debriefed on the next steps. There, most of the next steps are part of the Board Improvement Committee, but there are a couple, I think, that may cross over to Performance Management. So the Performance Management team, I'll be, you know, briefing them and figuring out how we move forward with all of our self-evaluation follow-ups, because I think it was like a half a dozen items that we're adding to our plate. And so we need to prioritize them, and slot them in the committee meetings for the upcoming year. The one key item that I'd like to identify and bring to attention under Board Improvement Updates is the School Liaison Program. It seemed to have been a success, both from the board perspective, as well as the school's perspective. And therefore, what we are doing for this upcoming year is, we've done some school reassignments. But we're also looking at some guidelines, so that we have some consistency, and kind of a little bit more of a process, you know, that everyone understands of what the intent is, what the purpose is, what we're trying to achieve here in learning and understanding our comprehensive school system, so that we can govern the best that we know how. So I know that there are draft guidelines that were communicated to the board, just for your input, because the next committee meeting, what we'd like to do is complete those guidelines and present it to the full board for approval. And then ultimately, communicate the guidelines out to not only the schools and principals, but all the employees. Lastly, is the policies. There were two policies that were discussed, and we're going to have to revisit them at the upcoming meeting. One is residency, and other is extracurricular activity, or, excuse me, extracurricular athletics. Any questions?
Any? Mrs. Hirsch?
Yeah, I wanted to offer some information that relates to the residency component. Just in reading through the minutes, there was a discussion, apparently, about tuition for those families that, I'm trying to come up with the right way to describe this. Our current policy states that there can be an exception to our residency requirements, and the discretion is offered to the superintendent to make the determination as to if there is a valid reason for there to possibly be a residency exception granted. And I understand that there was a particular family that came to the meeting, and there was some discussion. And I think one of the things that we talked about when we established committees is that we had three new board members who were on the policy committee and might not have had a little bit more of the history. And not that I have a ton more, but there was a note that the committee and the superintendent didn't know of any prior exceptions that had been leveraged. And I think, if I remember correctly, I think it was two summers ago, we had significant flooding in town, and many families were displaced and could not stay in their homes. And these storms came through, and they were at a time when actually we were doing school registration, and we were, you know, getting kids registered for school. There were some families, if my recollection is correct, that were actually displaced out of Elmhurst, found temporary housing in a neighboring community. And I believe that the superintendent at the time did actually waive the residency requirement, given that this was an act of God, a storm that couldn't have been prevented, their homes had been, you know, become unlivable. So I think maybe a little bit more research could be done into how many exceptions we granted, but that was one case. Maybe Mr. Collins or Mrs. Deroni, you recall us making exceptions to that. But my recollection is, we actually posted on our website, if you have been displaced and, you know, you are a student in our school district, please let us know, and we'll work with you to accommodate. So that is the one instance that I do know. I believe, I could be incorrect. Maybe everybody was back in their homes. But I think that was one opportunity where we offered families an exception to that residency rule.
Mrs. Deroni?
Regarding the Board Self-Evaluation Follow-Up, I was under the impression that we, as a full board, or at least first the committee and then a full board, we're going to talk about our committee structure. Did we think that these committees were working? Did I miss that, the whole conversation? We now have a whole list of committee dates for the whole year. All the committees are the same. Did we ever have the discussion about what's working for the administration in terms of those committees, and what is working for the board, what's working for the community? We heard a lot at our meet-and-greet about that certain members of the public are really unhappy with the committee structure, and we never really flushed that out as a board. Did you talk about that? Is that upcoming, what, where it's happening with the committee structure discussion?
From the Board Improvement Committee, we do have it on an upcoming meeting, that, you know, the laundry list of things that we need to revisit, both from the feedback we've received, and secondly, from the policy that we still did not finalize, because we're waiting for all of these discussions to take place, or meetings to take place. If we want, I mean, we have to decide, you know, should it be a full board? Do we want to start it in the committee? Do we want to, you know, move around priorities?
Is that a topic we should put on next meeting's agenda?
Set the course of the board?
Yeah. At the full board meeting. Just talk about how the committees are going, what we think about scheduling, how often they meet, et cetera, et cetera. And is that something that we should allow us, one cycle of the, before we put it on the full board agenda, should we allow each committee to meet once and put that on their agendas, and talk about, reflect a little upon the each individual committee and the frequency that they meet, the frequency that they think they should meet, what they feel they accomplished in the first year, what they think they can accomplish in the second year? How would the board like to do it? I guess those, I just threw out two possibilities. I'm sure there are more.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to discuss among the individual committees, recap the year and how it went, and, you know, if we're satisfied with the administration, I think that's a good idea.
Go ahead.
I think that, I hate to admit this, but I went back and added up the number of meetings that we've had, and we are projected to have this calendar year. And it's a significantly high number. And we've made a significant departure from what our past Board of Education, in terms of the time commitment, both the board member's time, as well as our superintendent's time and staff time. And I think that it would be very healthy for us to have a good conversation around the effectiveness of the committees, us staying disciplined and focused on what our priorities and what we agree to are priorities for the year. And maybe each committee can have, you know, I know the two committees that I sit on will be meeting before September 11th, the next regular board meeting. I'm not sure that all four committees are going to meet before then, but I think that might be, you know, a natural discussion. And I do think that we, seeing as how it's two minutes to 10 o'clock, you know, we did have a lot on the agenda tonight, but we do like to talk. So maybe we have to implement some discipline.
So all four committees will meet before September, before the Tuesday, September 11th meeting? Shall we ask each committee to put that topic on their agenda, come back, and we can have a discussion at that meeting as a full board? Okay? All right. Next, because we're not finished with committee reports yet, is Curriculum and Instruction. Mrs. Ebner?
We met on August 1st, and we discussed updates on STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math. And Dr. Johns gave a nice overview of the improvements to our math and science curriculum in grades four through eight. I'm opening up a document here. So we have in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, science, there are new STEM labs, and also improvements to existing labs, which is more of an inquiry-based lab structure, and also more creativeness and invention embedded into some of these STEM labs. So it's an improvement from the past year, and the committee was excited about that Also, for technology, we discussed one-to-one computing at the high school, and classroom set of iPads and Chromebooks have been purchased to be used for one quarter per class, and then rotated among classrooms to increase access for students. Also, interactive whiteboards will be installed in all first-grade classrooms to, again, address some of the equity issues that we've discussed over the year. So that was a brief overview of STEM. Also, the other major topic was English learner update. Karen Muletary provided an update regarding services and programs offered to our English learners. And she reviewed the number of students that are English learners. It has doubled in the past several years. And our current EL program, English learner program, is, has not resulted in significant gains. It's not closing the achievement gap. What we're currently doing is not, is not working. So she talked about a lot of research-based methods to improve academic results for our English learners. And so one particular method includes native language instruction and English as a second language instruction together for an adequate amount of time. And research has shown that students need much more than three years of this kind of instruction to have lasting skills. And also, we talked about state mandates around English learner, this program. And we will have a transitional bilingual program at Madison, Conrad Fisher, Hawthorne, Churchville, and York, where there are more than 20 Spanish speakers enrolled. So this is in response to state mandates. I had a question for Chris, too. As instructional minutes increase for English learners, we would most likely get more revenue from the state as our instructional minutes increase for bilingual. So I just wondered if, is that reflected in our budget for the next upcoming year? It's just something to think about, nothing to answer now. But as our program increases, then we would most likely get more reimbursement from the state and federal government. But I just wanted to plant that seed for now. Next steps for our English language program is, we're going to have a future board workshop meeting to discuss the different methods on how to reduce the achievement gap, how to, what the best methods are, or research-based methods, and talk about what other districts are doing. So that will be coming up soon, and talking about other models. What we want to do first, though, is let Karen and Charles know what kind of information we need, so we can have a really good, robust discussion when we do talk about this program, this bilingual program. So more will be coming on that. I think this is about it. We discussed our annual work plan for the year, so that's ongoing. We'll finalize that in the next meeting or two. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? We're coming down to the home stretch. The next is the superintendent's consent agenda, and I remind you, we've already voted on item A. Anyone like to remove any items? Mr. McDonough? No? Mrs. Hirsch?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items B, C, and D.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion, please? Okay. I mean, Mr. McDonough looks like he wanted to make a comment, so I'm just trying to flush that out. Okay. Right. Okay. We need a roll call vote on this. Mrs. Walsh?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. The superintendent's agenda passes as submitted. And then, the final thing, let me just review the upcoming meetings. Now, the first one, my understanding, I heard the Performance Management Committee meeting on August 16th is postponed to be determined today.
To be determined tomorrow morning.
Okay, to be determined tomorrow morning, so watch eagerly for that posting. Tuesday, August 21st, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM in this very complex of rooms right here. Thursday, August 23rd, the Board Improvement and Policy Committee meeting at 7:00 in this room. Wednesday, September 5th, the Curriculum and Instruction meeting at 7:00 PM in this room. Tuesday, September 11th, is the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Tuesday, September 11th, is the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this room. And finally, Tuesday, September 25th, Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this room. And then, that leaves our final item, which is Board Communications. Anything that we haven't already covered this evening? Mr. McDonough?
Really quickly, I know Maria was there, and I was there, and I think Karen was there as well, to the new teacher luncheon that the Chamber of Commerce was very gracious to put on, they do every year, to welcome our new teachers. It was a great event, as it always is every year, and we thank them for their support of our mission. The interesting thing was the high majority, greater than previous years, of ELL and special education hires. It's evidence of the challenges that were going on, but a great group of people coming on to meet those challenges.
I had the privilege of meeting our new teachers at 8:30 this, that morning, and I will concur. It is a great group of individuals, and we're very happy and proud to have them in our district.
Move to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Deroni. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.